I'd like to call the September 2nd, 2021 Regular Board of Education Meeting to Order. Mr. Anagostu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Salee?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mrs. Hausen?
Here.
We are all present, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is Executive Session to, what's the official verbiage?
To consider the appointment of a public official.
To consider the appointment of a public official, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausen, second by Mrs. Buckner-Salee, any discussion? Hearing none, take the roll.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
We will enter into Executive Session at 7:02. We do expect to have business afterwards, thank you. Booming Public Session at 7:10 PM. Next on our agenda is Resolution to Fill Board of Education Vacancy. Whereas a vacancy has been caused on the Board of Education by reason of resignation, and whereas this Board of Education has the legal authority to fill a vacancy for the unexpired term thereof, now therefore be it resolved by a majority vote of all the remaining members of the Board of Education of the Strongsville City School District that John Kropinski be and hereby is appointed to serve as a member of the Board of Education of this school district for the unexpired term of September 2nd, 2021, ending on December 31st, 2021. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausen, second by Mrs. Bissell, any discussion?
So I will share with the community that whenever the Board is in this position, it is our job to select a candidate, and we try to select the best candidate that we can select for this Board at this time. And I always make sure to highlight this Board at this time. This selection has a few characteristics about it. The first of it being that because of when the resignation occurred and the timing of the resignation, it will be an interim position, if that's a way to describe it. The position is from today until the end of the year. And then at the end of the year, the electoral process will take over and the voters will choose the next members of the Board of Education. And so I do want to thank all 16 residents who applied for this position. I think I do speak for all of us. Our goal is always to have a difficult decision to make, and a difficult decision because we have to choose amongst many qualified excellent candidates. And that was true this time as it has been in the past. So again, our challenge was trying to find the best candidate for this Board at this time. The other thing that the Board was well aware of is that the voter has a say in our affairs. And we felt it was important to find someone that can meet the needs, can hit the ground running, can do the job well, isn't going to learn on the job. But also, we felt it was important to allow the voters of Strongsville to have their opportunity to determine the makeup of the Board without any bias or influence or anybody questioning political motives. And so I'm really pleased that John applied, and I'm pleased that we're going to be able to vote on him. Does anybody else have any comments?
Hearing none, George, would you take the roll?
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. And Mr. Anagostu, I give you the honor and privilege of executing the oath of office to Mr. Kropinski.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Mr. Kropinski, you want to meet me at the podium and administer the oath of office? Kropinski, raise your hand. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Strongsville School District, Cuyahoga County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and here acted, to be enacted during your continuous and set office until your successor is elected and qualified? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Congratulations.
Welcome, John, do you have any words?
I would like to say it's my privilege to have this opportunity. The Strongsville City Schools has meant so much to me over the 17 years that I was in the Strongsville City Schools as principal at Zeller's and Künzner, as HR Director, as Assistant Superintendent, and as Superintendent. Now as resident, I'd like to give back to the Strongsville City Schools all the things they gave to me. It's a wonderful school district, and it's this opportunity I look forward to, to serve, to assist, and to do the best I can to give the students of the Strongsville City Schools the best education possible. And I thank the Board for their confidence.
Well said, thank you. Next on our agenda is District Goals. Our District Goals remain the same, academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. And we measure all of our efforts by those three goals. Next on our agenda is Public Comment, and I do have a few public comment tonight. First is Karen Farhat. If you would approach the podium and let us know your name and address, and you have approximately three minutes.
I could go second, I've never done this before. Karen Farhat, do I have to state my address publicly?
Address.
Because it's on, I see it, so, okay. 16117 Glendale Avenue. I am a parent of two Chapman Elementary School children. Last school year, we pulled our children out of the school and took the route of a homeschool pod, not because we were afraid of the virus, but because we were afraid of the inconsistency of in-school or virtual learning and the masking and social distancing that was mandated onto our children and staff. I am a firm believer that children need to see expression on faces and soft comfort of getting their shoes tied or taking their hand while they're walking down the hallway. This year, we re-enrolled our children at Chapman because we have maintained the masking issue as per parents' discretion. I am not afraid of a virus with such a high recovery rate, especially for the young. I also do not appreciate the discrimination that has continued to plague our community. We are adults trying to protect our children the best way we know how. If you choose to mask your kids, that's your choice. If you choose not to, that's your choice, and we should all respect each other's choices. Professional titles are often thrown out, and levels of education are often thrown out too. But once we become a parent, that goes out the door. I too am as educated as some of the famous people that we are hearing now about Bill Gates. He dropped out of college, so did I. But for some reason, we're listening to all his recommendations. Some people may throw out the American Pediatric Association recommendations, but please note that their number one donors are pharmaceutical companies. The same companies that poison our society with toxic ingredients and medications. Some may also throw out their medical history or their immune compromise diagnosis. I too am one of those people. You're looking at someone who has survived a lot of medical things, and it's one of the reasons why I can't and won't cover my face or do anything else. I have suffered brain tumor, head craniotomy, then a seizure, then a stroke, then another seizure, heart surgery, I could go on. I will not let my children live in fear or be discriminated against. For those who are old enough to remember that we used to get together with a person infected with chickenpox when we were little. Our parents wanted us to have natural immunity. We never quarantined our kids from strep or pink eye. Instead, we received a note in the folders that they may have come in contact. We used to believe that natural immunity was the best way to combat many viruses. Now trust me when I say I don't want anybody, especially our children, to get sick. But it's a NyQuil commercial, all the symptoms, so they're bound to get something, and then they're going to be sent home to be quarantined. The mental health of our children is far more important to me than covering their faces when they could hardly breathe or barely wear their masks properly. To quarantine a healthy child to me is also a crime. You have to understand the stress it puts on them to be isolated from their classmates and even from the life outside of school. When will we keep our children's health to their parents' discretion and not to the government or the schools? The school works for the people of the community. Then what would be done if, or, sorry. I don't look at school as a daycare. I would love to have my kids home with me all the time. But I want them to have the experiences that I did at school, with the friends, with learning, with all the activities, with meeting all the different people. I loved it, and I want them to have that too. So I just ask that we just be kind, and then we keep the mask mandate to parents' discretion, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Leonard Belvin. Again, your name and address, and you have approximately three minutes.
Leonard Belvin, 10136 Fair. Mine is also about a similar topic. Last week, a message was left on my phone that my daughter's school, Sarar Elementary, would be put under mandatory mask the following day. So me and my wife both opposed this, and we believe it should be parent choice. And we would like to know, I would like to know, why wasn't it left up to the parents? There was no parent vote? Why was it a message left late in the evening the night before? Why isn't it optional? Why is this mask mandate, why are you able to force this upon our small children? And many parents' opinions, and rightfully so, damage our children by making them wear masks, not letting them see their other students' faces, not letting them see and communicate with their fellow students. I believe it's damaging our children, I believe last year showed that, and I saw some negative effects within my own children. I have three children in Strongsville school systems right now, and one that has graduated. So I'm a parent at all levels, and will continue to be so. I was told there was a policy board, the board's policy, that triggered the mask mandate at Sarar. I'd like to know what policy that is, and what we can do to change that policy to allow it to have where the parents, it's optional if you want to mask your child. Because, you know, I'm not against parents who want to mask their children, that's fine. But we have to respect all the parents out there, and our feelings as far as how we want to raise our children, and what we want, our decisions within our household. And so if you guys can answer those questions, I'm not sure if that's the time for that right now, but I would like some answers.
Sure.
Because my child was sent home from school also for not wearing a mask and missed a day of school. And then I talked with Dr. Reba, and we got that worked out. But, you know, obviously that doesn't help either, having the kids miss school. Thank you.
So what I will share with everyone is that we look at public comment as a time to listen more and talk less. But quite honestly, all our public comments tonight, I think, nope, I think they're all about COVID and mask in general. So what I'd like to do is continue to listen, and we'll get through the public comments, and then if, as a board or as a superintendent, we have any clarifications that we can make, we'll do that. But I'm afraid we'll repeat ourselves, so I'm going to try to be efficient on that. But we will get you answers. Our next public comment is Kevin Hantek.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kevin Hantek, I live at 8539 Nancy Drive in Strongville. First of all, I want to thank everyone for providing this comment, public forum, and also thank the school administration for everything you've done so far in a very difficult time. I truly do believe that everyone has the best intentions with regards to providing high-quality education that is both high-level and safe. But today, I want to provide comment on the current masking policy that Dr. Reba and the school board have chosen to implement. Given that this has become a very emotional subject within the community, I want to take this opportunity to provide a perspective that removes the feelings from the argument, as the focus should be on the science. Multiple public health agencies have recommended the use of universal masking policy, including the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and the Ohio Department of Health. These same agencies also indicated in-person learning as a priority. According to the CDC, safely returning to in-person instructions in the fall 2021 is a priority. They also say, due to the circulating and highly contagious Delta variant, CDC recommends universal indoor masking policy by all students, staff, teachers, and visitors K through 12, regardless of vaccination status. Quoting a statement from Dr. Reba from a superintendent update email sent on August 16th, quote, "The best way to significantly reduce the risk of being quarantined and to stay in school is to wear a mask," end quote. From this statement, it appears that you, Dr. Reba, agree with the CDC on the best method. Therefore, it is interesting to me that the policy you and the board have chosen to implement make the best method optional. From this, I can only conclude that there are other factors at play here, ones that do not align with medical experts' position, the rather political factors, such as appeasing a large percentage of the community that downplay or think the issue is overblown. But this portion of the community should not hold the same weight as those of the medical expertise in the matter. Dr. Reba, I trust you to implement the best methods in education for my child. This is your expertise. However, you do not hold the same credentials in epidemiology, pediatrics, or statistics. You or the Board are simply not qualified. But that's okay, you don't have to bear the burden. You simply have to choose to adhere to the recommendations from the scientific experts regardless of the popularity of the decision or the, excuse me, the political ramifications. I do commend you regarding the work you've done so far. I see you are adapting your risk-based approach to managing COVID in our schools as recommended by these public health agencies. However, by not instituting universal masking, your baseline position deviates from the public health recommendation with no logical reason. I ask you and the Board to implement universal masking, follow the experts, follow the science. It's the best chance we have for a good school year here. And to end the quote from a statement today by Dr. Bruce Vanderhoff, the Director of the Ohio Department of Health, "To help curb the spread of COVID-19, we strongly encourage schools that are not already doing so to mask." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and next is Vanessa Whitford.
Can't read the paper, sorry. My name is Vanessa Smith Whitford. My address is 18249 Mattel Lane. I'm here again to speak to you regarding the district's COVID policies and my frustration with leadership. You continue to show an inability to both take a proactive approach and model strongly recommended behaviors that will help preserve in-person learning and protect the health of our students and staff. Your reactive response started this year in the classroom. I attended my daughter's open house on August 17th. Her desk, as well as the desk of other students, were set up not only two inches of space between them, but with students facing one another. When I expressed concerns about this, I was told that the children are indeed three feet apart, and that according to the reading of the O D H recommendations, that directionality was not a part of the recommendation for social distancing. A few days later, my daughter's desk was moved into rows, with students no longer facing one another. Then came a second move, where desks were spread further apart. This Monday, when we spoke about school, my daughter informed me that the desks had been moved yet again with even further space put between them. These reactive policies continue to the lunchroom. I had a very specific conversation at open house regarding concerns with seating in the lunchroom. I asked, where would the students be sitting? The reply, with four on one side of the table and four on the other. When I further inquired, how could any of those students be three feet apart, let alone six feet apart to prevent quarantines? I was told, we're doing the best we can, but we only have so much space. Again, fast forward to this Monday, and our gymnasium is now our lunchroom because it seems there is indeed enough space for students to be six feet apart. So I asked, which is it? Were you unable to do six feet, or were you unwilling? This reactive decision-making is causing additional work for so many people. Teachers, principals, and custodians are tasked with moving tables and desks, sometimes several times a week, all in an effort to fix something that should have been set up properly from the beginning. I am so discouraged with the leadership in this district. I expect that you will anticipate problems and solve them before they occur, not wait until they adversely impact a significant portion of our student body. Problems are not being addressed proactively, and in fact, don't seem to be taken all that seriously. The superintendent, and all but one member of this Board themselves, while discussing the strong recommendations that masks be worn, do not themselves model the recommended behaviors. I am concerned that eventually the number of isolated and quarantined students will likely force the Board to react again. It is a disservice to the families and staff in this district that more proactive decisions cannot be made for the sake of preserving robust, healthy, in-person learning for our students that so desperately need it. Thank you.
Thank you, and next is Jessica Coza.
My name is Jessica Coza, and I reside at 9812 Hazelwood Avenue. In light of the time of year, I feel compelled to bring up something that I think many of us had gone through about 20 years ago. A catastrophic event hit our country, and for a minute here, I'd like to share my experiences on how I navigated through a rough senior year of high school. I promise I have a point. A lot of people know that I'm originally from Long Island, New York. I was active in marching band, and my first period that morning was concert band. So we spent the class outside, practicing our routine for the upcoming homecoming parade. Second period comes, and I remember another teacher running into our room for us to stop and pointed to the loudspeaker. That's when we heard the words, "The tin towers were taken down." I stood up, and I said, "My father works there, I need to call home." I was escorted by a teacher and was the second person in line in the office to use the phone. The girl in front of me hangs up, puts her head in her hands, and says, "We can't get ahold of my dad, he's there." I took a breath and called home. My mother picked up with what sounded like she had been unraveling all morning, and that's when I had learned that my father had taken an emergency flight to his other office in Chicago, so he was not there. Nor were my uncles, who both worked for the NYPD and the FDNY, but they were on their way back into the city for rescue efforts. I hung up the phone and told the school nurse who was standing there what was going on. She hugged me and said, "I'm going to need you, there will be students with no information." As the day went on, more students came down. We had to move from the nurse's office to the gymnasium, consoling other children, listening to radio broadcasts of the news that day. We were on lockdown, meaning we could not change classrooms, and we were only allowed to use the cafeteria for lunch. I was a senior, so I was not allowed to leave campus. By the end of the day, my friends from the class that I was pulled from came down to the gymnasium looking for me. I had forgotten about the hours. I buried my face into their shoulders, and I cried. That week, an emergency school board meeting was called, and it was decided that all field trips were canceled for the year due to heightened threats in the area. We were bummed, no competitions, no trip to Disney, it was gone in a hot minute. What I remember the most was our community response. I remember people coming together to help make our senior year more bearable. I remember an influx in compassion and kindness and help. We lost five community members that day. I had learned the girl before me did in fact lose her father. His name was Rudy. He was in Tower 2, where my father's office was, just a few floors up. My wish after sharing this story is that we work together in a rough time with things that are beyond our control. We need more compassion, collaboration. We ultimately have the same goal, and that is to keep our kids in school and prevent further learning loss, and also to prevent more sickness and possibly a death in our community. Let's be reasonable, and let's get through this. I understand we're all frustrated and very tired of COVID. I'm calling for some kind of unity before this all falls apart. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments. And next on our public comment is Rachel Belvin. Did I say that right?
Hi, guys, I'm Rachel Belvin, 10136 Fair Road. One of the things I want to talk about was the spring break. Spring break last year, I didn't mind that, it was tied to Easter weekend. This year, you guys did it again. Normally it's at the end of March, and now it's tied to Easter. So I do kind of have a little bit of a problem with that because it does prevent, Easter's a holiday, I do celebrate, and we normally do it with family, and then we try to do our spring break as a vacation, that we go somewhere or do something, or as a family, separate from the entire family. So I just want to kind of put that out there for maybe next year, or thinking forward, that maybe keeping them separate and allowing us to have that weekend would be great. I do work in school health, I am in a middle school neighboring, and that's what I do every day. From the beginning of COVID, I've been dealing with this directly. I see, I'm trying to bring you guys a different perspective from what's really going on inside the schools. We know that recommendations are exactly that, they're just recommended. A lot of it is based on information, data, but it's still a general decision, that you have a recommendation. We know that, or I know that, and most people that are in the schools know that, students that are fully masked and fully vaccinated are still getting positive COVID results. We do know that it's going to be more so in the younger group of masks not really benefiting the children because if any of you have walked through an elementary school, it is hanging down their nose, it is under their chin, it is hanging in the wind. They are touching it, they are touching things, they are touching each other. If masks are used effectively, they can slow your chances of getting it based on information. But that is literally doing it 100%, 100% of the time. We know that that's not happening, and it's not possible. Honestly, masks aren't the main way of doing it, six feet away would be for isolated or children. So some suggestions- So some suggestions could be as simple as this, is still giving options to parents. Those children that can be vaccinated, be vaccinated, those children that wear a mask, be, wear a mask because we know that if you're vaccinated or fully masked properly, which I don't see how any elementary school kid could avoid quarantine based on wearing a mask full-time. Because they just don't, they don't. Um, we have in our school and our older kids, we have teachers that verify that they do not wear their mask properly. Therefore, they still get quarantined. I don't know if our teachers are doing that in our district, but I can't see it happening in the elementary. We do know that there are no deaths at this point, especially for this age group. Sixty and above is where it was affected. That was the point, that we shut down everything because we did have deaths and that is important. All lives matter and it really did make a difference that we stopped. It was new for all of us, we had to figure out what this is, what it's doing. But yet our lack of research was mainly focused completely on a vaccine or that kind of way, instead of focusing also on all aspects of this. That means natural immunity, also means other ways of coping with the virus, which we do not have enough data, we do not have enough information to support or unsupport this stuff. That's the thing, when we look at all the information, it's there, the recommendations and yet they're saying, yeah, this, this, and this, but they're not saying, no, no, no either. There, it's kind of like a gray zone. They're kind of saying, yes, but no, and no, but yes. And to me, that's not enough evidence and information to support everything. If we can't keep six feet apart, then really that's the main thing. Our children are not and should not be held responsible to stop the spread of a virus at all. They should be focused on education, we know firsthand, I know firsthand, sixth grade and below have suffered with anxiety, panic attacks. They are struggling emotionally and it's, it's different. It's, it's a different world for these kids. We need to stop putting so much pressure on them. They were already pressured enough with just being good kids and going to school every day and just turning in their homework. Now they're responsible for not spreading a virus that honestly is hitting everyone. It is, it was funny that she said chickenpox because that's kind of how I do refer to it. It seems like no matter if you're masked, vaccinated or not, or it, it, it's just spreading. And that's what it is, but we don't have to be worried for our children because they're really not at risk of dying from this, they're not at risk of, more kids are in the hospital right now for R S V. That is what's going around right now. And we have stomach issues, I have kids that are going home that have not COVID, but yet it seems like COVID because I got sent home because I got one or two symptoms or something and it's tummy issues, it's constipation, ninety percent of the time, guys, just saying. Uh, make sure your kids drink water. But, listen, I have a child, uh, there's no, oh, this is other thing. There's no flexibility in this too because we have children that have disabilities, they have sensory issues. They have um, uh, hyper activities and impulsivities and act, and, and behavioral problems enough that they struggle with on a daily basis, long enough to have to worry about um, we're following these other rules to protect um, something that us parents are supposed to be doing. We should not be sending our child to school if they have any symptom. If they have a symptom, you keep them home. We monitor, if they're good, they go back, if they're not, we send them to the doctor, we go get them tested. We should be the ones to, you know, monitoring and taking charge of that. It should not be so much the schools that have to enforce possibility of a sickness. We, especially when now we have, if you're fully masked, you don't go home, if you're fully vaccinated, you don't go home. So for those people who could be walking around with COVID, are spreading it because they don't need to be tested. They don't need to um, find, you know, worry about spreading it or not because they're vaccinated and fully masked. But we know in stats that fully vaccinated, fully masked kids are testing positive. They may be asymptomatic and you wouldn't know it, they're not going to show it. They may say, oh, I have a headache one day and that's enough. And you went, no, and why would we, why would we investigate that? And, and most of us don't, so that's what I'm saying. The children need to focus on their education. We as parents need to be proactive in making sure that they, we aren't sending our children to school sick to help with this, the, the spread of it, but it's not the children's responsibility to stop it. Nobody is at risk at this point, under the age of sixty, especially under the age of twelve, um, from getting sick and dying from this, especially that they aren't recovering. I am eight days and they're pretty much back at it. And um, I have yet to see one person, every infected positive that I've seen thus far has been from somebody who has not had COVID prior. So that's another thing. So vaccinated and fully masked, these kids that are testing positive have not had COVID before. I have yet to come across one that had COVID, recovered and has had it again. Just my personal experience and that's why I'm sharing, we should also be talking to. When we send in numbers to the state, they're that, they're numbers. There's no history behind it, there's no saying, oh, well, this many kids got quarantined because guess what? This kid, three days ago, had a symptom, came to school for three days, played football and all this and now, yeah, we have to quarantine all these possibility of kids. It was a lack of parent involvement. And if we sit here and just focus more on making sure that the kids are well, doing your best. If you can't put six feet away, that would be another thing, put mat, the masked kids and the vaccinated kids and then have the neither of those six feet apart, then nobody has to go home either. So these are just ideas, these are just thoughts, these are things I'm experiencing and I have no problem sharing more information about what I'm witnessing and experiencing firsthand. Um, I know parents, you guys are so great and, and you're trying to follow, you're following the news, you're following the, the feeds and the information and all these things and they are good. They are, but they're for the state of Ohio, they're not for this school or this district. And we have to say what's going on in this district. And if nobody's going home and the, uh, and the, the, the start of it isn't starting in our schools, we shouldn't have to send them home and miss out on education because of the possibility of maybe being sick. They have no symptoms, but because maybe they were in contact with this guy and this guy's dad or this person has it, then, like I said, they are recovering a hundred percent. I have not witnessed personally and that's just what I've seen in my neighborhood. I have four kids in the district, um, one graduated last year, so yay, woo-hoo, must pay pride. Um, but I just, I, I love the schools and I love um, what I do and I get this opportunity to live on these students every day and I get to see firsthand the effects of everything that's going on. And um, like I said, it's not their responsibility to stop the spread. It really is the parents to make sure that they don't send their kids home or to school sick and they are getting checked and if they're sick, then they stay home. If they're COVID, they do their, their time and they come back and then we just get back to normal in that sense. Um, we can't save everyone, but we know that death is not really an option at this point anymore because those who can be vaccinated are, if you're at risk of dying or being sick, severely sick, you would have been vaccinated, I would think. And I would think that you are using precautions to protect yourself if you are at risk or if you choose that you don't want to be sick. The flu, colds, all these things are going to occur. We can't prevent those, we never have.
Rachel.
Let's just kind of come together and um, keep the kids in school and give parents choices to make their decision based on the data and the information that you give us. That's all.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your comments. I'll just generally say, I think the discussion we have is healthy and I think it shows the challenge that we have as board members and as an administration. Um, there's a bunch of opinions, there's a uh, a variety of ways of looking at it. Ultimately, the way the board and the administration attempts to uh, make decisions is to try to meet our mission, which is keeping our children educated. And we, we know that the best way to do that is to have them in school and at the same time balancing the risks. We're going to continue to do that. I will say, you know, for us, it's not a game of gotcha. For us, it's a game, a, a, a mission of best effort. We're going to make the best decisions we can today and we're going to be open and honest enough to adjust when the facts change. Um, so I, you know, any, anyone who thinks that we're not going to do that, we will. That's a daily thing, we're going to start, we needed to start the school year, we did start the school year. I think we did it very well, I think we did it in a balanced way. Um, and our, our policies result, uh, allow that and it was important to us as a board to give the administration, to give Dr. Raiba the day-to-day ability to react. So I'm going to stop talking now and see if uh, there's any other comments from the board members. And hearing none, Cameron, did you want to give a few comments on, or did you want to save it for superintendent's report?
Either way, whatever you prefer. So I, I don't know if I'm, I took some notes as, as folks were talking, so I don't know if I'm going to get to all of it. So I'll start with the tough one, spring break. So, spring break is uh, we have a calendar every two years. Uh, we'll have a calendar committee uh, coming up now, but the reason we uh, have altered our spring break is to align with the Polaris Career Center. So the challenge that we have is if our spring breaks are different, kids never get a spring break because they have to attend school when we're open, they have to attend school when Polaris is open. So a few years ago, we worked with Polaris and all Polaris districts aligned our spring breaks for that factor. So that's a conversation we'll be having again uh, with our Polaris colleagues uh, and then we have a calendar committee that's represented by parents and, and staff, so we'll, we'll take a look at that. In terms of all the comments on, on masking uh, and, and COVID protocols, tonight is a microcosm of every day of my life for the last eighteen months. And, and I'm not complaining about that, I, I, I take that responsibility on, but I, I think this is an example of the challenges that we have in our community, the challenges we have in society in terms of very different views on, on similar topics. And so you, now it's masked, before it was remote learning or in-person learning or solo academy. It's now becoming people don't agree with quarantine procedures. So as time goes on, the topic changes and we're all very divided. And what that means for us as a school district is that, as Mr. Hansek, I think, uh, said, my job is to educate students. And for eighteen months, my focus has not been educating students full-time like it, like it should be. It's been managing a pandemic because sometimes people force decisions on you, sometimes people are not making decisions anymore. And so as a superintendent, you are put as the person for your community to decide what's in the best health and safety interest of your community. I didn't sign up for that, but that's the role I have and I take it on and I take responsibility for it. And if you take a look, we can do, we can go back and forth of, you know, really the health organizations want you to require, but they say recommend, but if you take a look from top to bottom, what the Ohio Department of Health and everybody says schools should do, we are doing. Um, and we're implementing to the best of our ability and, and so far, our plan of attack last year uh, kept kids in school in-person learning more than a lot of other school districts did. Uh, and we were able to do that in a strategic way and thus far, uh, we've been able to be strategic, keeping kids in person, allowing parental uh, choice, strongly recommending masks. And so going back to the comment of uh, that I was quoted in my parent update of the best way to keep your kids in school is to wear a mask, absolutely. And what I mean by that is not that, uh, is not anything but based on the quarantine rules we have to follow by the Ohio Department of Health, wear a mask, you stay in school. Anywhere in our elementary schools, if you wear a mask, the likelihood that you're going to get quarantined is almost nil. High school and middle school, you know, lunches, lunch is the challenge uh, there, but if you wear a mask, you're going to stay in school. If you don't wear a mask, uh, then the risk goes up that you're going to be quarantined. We have not had, uh, up to this point, uh, you know, from pre-K to eighth grade, cases that we see that have been spread within school. So the idea that COVID is, is spreading from student to student and we're putting other students at health risk. If I felt that was the case, then I would mandate everything I possibly could. Uh, but we're not seeing that spread. This week, uh, and when we update our dashboard next week, you'll see that we, we are, we are documenting some spread at the high school. The child, and I, we're, we're, we're saying it's spread, it's a student that was quarantined based on a direct contact at school that has now tested positive for COVID. Our high school students do a lot of stuff outside of school. So yes, they were quarantining, what they did out of school, I'm not sure, but we're counting it as a spread. So we need to, we need to be cognizant of that a, a, as we, we make our rules. Um, so in terms of uh, Mr. Belvin, you know, we've, we've spoken on the phone, uh, but in terms of the policy, if you want to write this down, it's eighty-four fifty point zero one. Um, if you go on our website, it says uh, district and then you can go to board and then you'll see board policy. And so what that policy says, it's the same policy we've had for a couple of years now. It says during um, during times of heightened community spread, the superintendent has the authority to implement facial coverings. Uh, and so that's what it says and that's what I did at Surrar. Um, and we've explained and, you know, I've talked to you about it, but for, for the public, the reason we did that is we saw a cluster of students in similar grade levels uh, that had COVID. It wasn't spread between them, but we took those proactive steps, not because we were fearful that kids were going to get sick and spread, that's always a concern, right? But we wanted to reduce quarantine, so we kept kids in school. What's the only way I can reduce quarantines and keep kids in school? It's requiring to wear a mask. Making sure that the positive cases of COVID um, do not spread or do not uh, get bigger than a couple of kids. Uh, and then the fact that we could keep students in, in school by, by mandating masks and, and that's what we did and it's worked. Um, that we didn't see increased COVID cases for Surrar. We saw quarantines significantly reduced and, and we're in a much better spot. Now, what it also says is this part is administrative guideline, this is not public on the, on the website, but I could share it to you uh, if you would like. It goes through all the administrative steps of what do we do for masking? And one of those things is if I enact a mandatory mask in a building or across the district and what do, what happens if students uh, or staff refuse to follow that, then there's a series of enforcement consequences that we have that basically says we are going to follow the code of conduct for refusal to follow uh, tho, those guidelines and that mask mandate. So in terms of do I have the authority, yes, I have the authority to do it. Um, I, I did it and I have the authority to enforce it if people refuse to, to follow that in a, in a variety of ways. Obviously, our goal is to do that as uh, in, in a, in a, the lowest step possible um, and, and keep students in the school. Um, the other thing, uh, you know, Vanessa, in terms of, you know, your feedback about reacting, I just want to let you know that that's sometimes what we have to do. I know, and I'm not speaking directly to you, but I know from an outside perspective, some of these decisions may seem easy and why didn't you see it and why didn't you do it? And some of the decisions I make, I learn from them, right? They're not all going to be perfect a hundred ti, a hundred percent of the time. But I think when we look at the complexity of fifty-six hundred students, eight hundred staff, eight buildings, multiple departments, rules changing constantly, the, the simplicity on the outside to say, well, why didn't you just do this? Versus the complexity of moving thousands of people around is sometimes easier said than done. So when we take a look at uh, you know, just a couple of examples that you used, uh, when we take a look at the students being in groups, we had a real, we have a real challenge. We had three hundred and, I said this this morning, you heard me this morning. We have three hundred more elementary students coming to school every day than we did last year. We don't have the ability to distance at six feet anymore in some of the classrooms. I can't talk in, in comprehensive terms because I have smaller class sizes at Surrar. I've got bigger classrooms at Maraski. I've got different uh, considerations in, in every place, but we put kids in a group in a way because it's educationally sound. When we take a look at the challenges our kids are having educationally because of the pandemic, because of the restrictions that we have to put in place, we want to look at how can we, how can we implement an educational system in the best way possible that keeps kids healthy, safe and healthy, but also mitigate some of the losses uh, that they're seeing continuously? Kids sitting in rows worked for many of us, I look around the generation that are in this room. It worked for us, it doesn't work for, for our kids here today. It doesn't work for their opportunity to collaborate and learn and work together. And so we put kids into groups, we socially distance them at three feet. You know the reason I changed it? Because it didn't play well with the parents. The parents were concerned, they were frustrated about students sitting facing each other seven hours a day. I had no data to say, you, you know, that it was, again, like I said, I contacted the Board of Health, said, am I interpreting this correct? They said, yes, you're correct. Um, but I did it because parents were concerned about their children. Um, and if that parent concern was there and I could alleviate that concern with all that's going on, I, I made that change and I'll own that. Um, in terms of uh, the lunchroom, we meet with all of our principals, we met with all of our principals to go through what are our COVID protocols uh, and what are we going to do? Um, you know, we didn't have the space in the classrooms like we did last year to socially distance as far as we did. Uh, the rules have always been, if you don't have a mask and you're not six feet apart, it's a quarantine. When we met together as an administrative team, the quarantine rules were, both people had to have a mask on. So let me say that I give the context of that. If I'm in a classroom and Jenny tests COVID positive and I'm within six feet of her, to not be quarantined, Jenny had to have a mask on and I had to have a mask on. And so the idea being, well, if we, if we put them in lunch and, and socially distance them as far as we can, it's not going to make a difference because they're going to get quarantined in the classroom most likely anyway. it's not going to make a difference, because they're going to get quarantined in the classroom most likely anyway. And so we started off and said, how can we have a lunchroom experience for our students, socially distancing as far as they could? And then the, then the quarantine rules changed shortly thereafter. They said, now both kids don't have to be masked, just one had to be masked. And so then we said, okay, that changes the game a little bit. We're going to reduce quarantines a little bit in the classroom. And then, how can we manage hundreds of more kids that, that are in the classroom or in the, in the school district? And how do we do that in a way that just doesn't replicate last year? Because last year wouldn't work. Last year, if we just said, okay, everybody's in the classroom, go eat in the classroom, that would have failed, because you're still three feet away. So sometimes, as frustrating as it may be, sometimes we have to get kids in there. We have to see it in motion, we have to see it working, and come up with better decisions. I don't know if, if the families know this, but the lunchroom solutions we have are different in every single building. Because they had to live it, they had to see it, they had to work through it and be able to say, here's how I can make it and work in my building. And Maraski is different than SRR is different than Whitney and Kinsner and Chapman. So as frustrating as that is, it is sometimes that we have to work through it with kids in the building to see how we can manage it and how we can work. So in terms of the masking and the data and the dashboard, you know, I, I said this to a number of parents. I am not against universal masking. I am not against parental choice. What I am for is whatever our local data says we should do. And one of the things that so far, and if, if it turns out not to be true in the future, I will correct it and move forward. But so far, the concern with that approach from parents is, well, you're just waiting for a lot of kids to get sick. So far, based on what we've seen, we've been able to put mitigation strategies in. That's reduced positive cases, kept kids in school, and done it safely for periods of time. And so that's what my focus is. My focus is, right now, based on contact tracing, I would ballpark 95-plus percent of our kids are getting COVID outside of school. So far, in our district, of all our COVID, all of our quarantines, four of them that have been quarantined have tested positive, they've all been at the high school level. So what, the question I continue to ask myself is, what can we do? And where do we need to implement mitigation strategies that are going to reduce the number of students that have to leave school, not because they're sick, but because of a quarantine? And for those families that are frustrated at our quarantine procedures, we've had a lot of discussion, we've talked with our legal counsel. Right now, we are following the Ohio Department of Health guidance. And so everything we do is directly related to the Ohio Department of Health guidance. Quarantine rules have changed 17 times since they started. They've evolved, we've evolved with them. Now, if you read the Plain Dealer today or Cleveland.com, there's a group of superintendents that's working with the state and the Ohio Department of Health to do a test about, can we reduce quarantines even further in Warren, Ohio? And so they're going to do a test to see, hey, can we reduce quarantines to reduce the amount of time kids are in school? And then let's take a look at that data and see if we can adjust and shorten the quarantine procedures based on that. So the state, us, are looking at that to see, is there a way where we can reduce that safely and keep kids in school? The other part that I would mention, and I guess this is the part where I'm bragging a little bit about what we've done, not defending, is that I think we've tried to provide as much choice as we possibly can for our families. We have a virtual school. We've had a virtual, a digital academy for a long time, but the state legislation has come in and put a whole lot of requirements on what that means to be. It's a heavy lift for a school district to have a virtual school now. Three administrators, but basically, that basically 50% of their time at the beginning of the year has been the virtual school. We're one of 135 school districts in Ohio that have done that, there's 614 total. We're giving that choice to our family, because we think, not, not about the work, but we think it's the best for our families. A lot of school districts with quarantines now are not live streaming or providing high-quality video instruction for their students. They're going back to the typical absence procedures of pick up the work, check out the Google Classroom, work through it at home. We're still live streaming our classes for students that are under quarantine. So in terms of how we can work to support on a multi-layered approach, in terms of, you know, not just about masking, we're socially distancing as far as we can. The same disinfection and sanitation protocols that we had last year are still in place. The HVAC ventilation plan that we had is still in place. You know, respiratory etiquette, those things are still in place. So we're doing everything we can, and I would say, if you look at our data, specifically at the elementary school and even at the middle school, the data indicates that the plan is working. The high school is something that I will be taking a look at and making a decision here shortly, if any additional mitigation strategies are going to be put in place based on the, the rate of positive cases and the quarantines that we're seeing this week. Any follow-up questions or things from the board that you feel I should address or missed?
I think you covered it. I was just going to comment that, you know, again, our, our, many of our decisions are strategic. You know, the, a lot of times, we want to cast them as, you know, either it's absolutely no masks or absolutely masks. Many of our decisions are strategic, so sometimes, sometimes there's principles that we're following. Sometimes it's, you know what, I, we're going to have a mask just so that we can control the quarantines, because the quarantines are, are rising. And I respect when, when those decisions go a foul of individual parents. But it, part of it is trying to be as responsive as we can to parents and, and what they're hoping for. And part of it is just being strategic or pragmatic or what have you. You know, the, the mandatory masking at SRR. It was a strategic decision regardless of everybody's opinion about spread and, and severity and, and all of those issues. At that point in time, we said, if we don't do this, so many children will be quarantined that it becomes impractical. So it was a one, two-week decision, and then we reassessed. And as far as anybody's, you know, wondering how we approach that, that's how we're going to continue to approach it, is to be strategic, to be practical, and, and to try to balance things that don't seem to want to be balanced. But we'll take those decisions day by day, week by week, and, and we'll get through it.
Anyone else have any comments? Next on our agenda is Treasurer's Report. Mr. Oniknostu.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have two items for your consideration tonight. They're, they both revolve around startup, startup funds, startup change funds. One for the cafeteria, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer. Then additional $200 be added to the cafeteria change fund for a total of $1,000, which 800 was approved in the July 12, 2021 board meeting. These funds are used to establish startup funds for the school cafeterias. And then B, the high school derby change fund at the high school, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that the high school derby change fund be established in the amount of $100. These funds are to be used to establish startup funds for the Derby Spirit Shop. And these are, in the beginning of the day, when they start their cash registers, they have change on hand. So at the end of each year, they're returned back to the Treasurer's Office, and then we begin, we reestablish at the beginning of the school year.
Any questions for George?
The high school Derby, the high school Derby store is awesome, and it's, it's really nice to see that. And I'm glad they need a change fund, and I hope they do lots of business.
Superintendent's Report.
I don't have anything specifically other than what we just talked about, so I'm going to turn it over to Jenny for our human resource report for this meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Raiba. Under Human Resources this evening, I have the following items for your consideration. Under B1, resignations for non-certificated staff. Under B2, appointments for non-certificated staff. Appointments for certificated substitutes. Appointments for non-certificated substitutes. Appointments for certificated supplemental contracts prorated. Appointments for certificated supplemental contracts prorated. These have to do with our sections in, in our schools. Continuing, another certificated supplemental contract prorated. And one non-certificated supplemental contract prorated. Under B3, and B4, we have two corrections that we caught after the agenda. So the first one is to the agenda on August 19, under Human Resources. Monica Pelosi's choir supplemental, it stated Whitney Elementary, she's at Kinsner Elementary. And then under B4, we had our testing consultants, the salary stated 26 and should be 2652. And that concludes my report.
And that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Any questions? Next on our agenda is Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the Consent Calendar at this point of the agenda means all items appearing in this agenda with asterisks are adopted in a single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? And I don't believe we had any modifications. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mr. Kropinski. Any discussion? I will say that that second was just awesome. Would you take the roll?
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mr. Kropinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yeah.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Next on our agenda is Board Policies. We have our third reading, which also means we're adopting these policies. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mr. Kropinski. Do we have any discussion? I will comment for the community that the majority of these policies, if not all, are, are updates to make sure that we remain in compliance with either state or federal law. The two that I'm going to highlight is Policy 5460. And that policy, we've adjusted our graduation requirements. Our old requirements had a requirement for personal finance business. And now, we don't want the students to have to double up, so we changed that so that they don't have that one from the business department. But don't worry, they still have a requirement for financial literacy, so our policy now reflects that. And then I also wanted to highlight for the community, Policy 6600, which is depositive public funds, cash collection points. And it is always important to us that we make sure, inform and function, that we take care of the taxpayers' dollars. And then the, the little point that we had updated was that if we do credit card transactions, there's no cash back. We don't have that, we never did that before, but now it's part of our policy. So if you come to a football game, you can buy the tickets with a credit card, but we're not going to give you cash back. Any other comments? Hearing none, would you take the roll? Oh, I apologize. The motion by was missed by, the, the motion was by Mrs. Hausum, and the second, again, done excellently by Mr. Kropinski.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mr. Kropinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yeah.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Next on our agenda is Board of Education Other. Do we have any others?
Well, I have one, and it is a comment about what we're all been talking about, et cetera. And I think it's important for the adults in the room to recognize that, as adults, we are responsible for having these conversations. And it's important that we have these conversations, but they still have effects on our children. And I just wanted to give a shout-out to Josie Binkley, who has done a personal project to have the Caring Counts bracelets. And the point is that caring counts, and that regardless of how we're going through this and what our, what our opinions are or how we approach it, we can always be caring of each other. And so I'm going to make sure to get myself a bracelet, and if anybody else gets a hold of Josie, make sure to ask for a bracelet too. And that's all I have today.
We do have need for executive session on the topics of?
To consider the employment of a public employee, to confer with an attorney for the Board of Education concerning disputes involving the board that are subject to pending or imminent court action, and to consider matters required to be kept confidential.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mr. Kropinski. Any discussion? Hearing none, take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mr. Kropinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yeah.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. We will enter into executive session at 8:15. We have no expectation of further business. I wish everyone a very happy Labor Day, enjoy the holiday weekend with family and friends, and thank you for your attention.